Hello and welcome to the Old Time Radio Hour. I'm your host, Justine Ward, and each week we bring you a classic show from radio's golden age. This week, we continue our comedy series with the delightful comedy of Eve Arden as Our Miss Brooks. On radio and later on television, Miss Brooks was America's favorite schoolteacher. We have selected two very funny episodes for your listening pleasure this week. A visit by the heads of the State Board of Education has the whole school mixed up, and it is hilarious. Enjoy Our Miss Brooks: School Board, first broadcast September 11th, 1949 on CBS.
Luster Cream Shampoo for Soft, Glamorous, Corressible Hair and Colgate Dental Cream to Clean Your Breath While You Clean Your Teeth and Help Stop Tooth Decay. Bring you Our Miss Brooks, starring Eve Arden. And now, another comedy episode of Our Miss Brooks, written and directed by Al Lewis. Many teachers returning from their vacations, well-tanned and rested, are looking forward to resuming their duties tomorrow morning. But Our Miss Brooks, who spent most of her vacation time teaching English at Madison High Summer School, doesn't share their enthusiasm for getting back into harness.
No, I've been wearing the thing so long, I'm saddle-sore. Of course, when summer school ended in August, I did make up my mind to get a complete change of scenery. So I took the money I received, added it to my savings from the regular school term, and by careful budgeting, was able to spend three glorious weeks in the furnished room I rent all year round. But last Thursday morning at breakfast, my landlady, Mrs. Davis, and I were discussing my plans for a Friday picnic.
But why must the picnic be tomorrow, Connie? Why not Saturday or Sunday?
Because, Mrs. Davis, tomorrow is the last weekday I'll have off until Thanksgiving. And if our beloved principal could get away with it, he'd change that to a Sunday.
Oh, Mr. Conklin isn't bad-bad, Connie. He likes a good time as well as the next fellow.
He likes a good time better than the next fellow. But if the next fellow happens to be a teacher, Mr. Conklin will stop having a good time to give the teacher who's having a good time a bad time. From a song by Rudy Valli.
Is Mr. Boynton taking you to the picnic, Connie?
Yes, Mrs. Davis. I accepted my invitation on the phone last night. It'll be good to see Madison's bashful biologist again. He just got back from a three-week vacation, you know.
Who will all is going on this picnic, Connie?
Hmm? Harriet Conklin and Walter Denton all. It was really Walter's idea. The poor kid can't spend any time with Harriet without Mr. Conklin constantly barking at him.
Mr. Conklin isn't very fond of Walter, is he?
Oh, it's not that Mr. Conklin isn't fond of Walter. He hates him. But it ought to be a nice outing for all of us. Oh, that's the door, isn't it?
No, that's the bell. The door makes more of a creaking sound.
Well, I'll answer it. I need the exercise.
If you want me, I'll be in the backyard, Connie. I've got to prune the trees.
Why, it's Mr. Boynton. Come in.
Good morning, Miss Brooks. I brought this basket over for the picnic tomorrow. Do you think it's big enough for us?
I don't know, but it might be fun trying it on. Oh, you mean for sandwiches? Well, it seems sort of small, but the basket can wait. I want to know all about your vacation. Where you went, what you did.
Well, I just went up to Eagle Springs, had a beautiful cabin, did a little fishing, played some golf and tennis. I did a little rowing, too, and at night they had a campfire where we broiled or barbecued steaks. After that, there was usually a movie or some entertainment at the casino. That's all there was to it.
You should've asked for your money back. Did you do any dancing at the casino, Mr. Boynton?
Dancing? Yes, I did dance a little.
With whom?
I, uh... I didn't dance with anyone, just by myself. You know, I'd get off in a... I'd get off in a dark corner of the casino and sort of waltz around in time to the music.
It's nice that way. Get bored, you can always cut in on yourself. Tell me, how was your trip back to town?
Very pleasant, although the train was quite crowded. Guess who came into town on the same train with me?
Who?
I'll take a guess.
Edgar Bergen and Charlie McCarthy.
No.
Charlie McCarthy alone?
No, Miss Brooks. No, it was Wallace T. Hewitt.
It was?
Yes, ma'am.
Wallace T. Hewitt himself?
That's right.
Gosh. Who's Wallace T. Hewitt?
I'm surprised at you, Miss Brooks. I thought every teacher knew the chairman of the State Board of Education.
Oh, it was that Wallace T. Hewitt. Did you ask him for a raise, Mr. Boynton?
I know you're joking, Miss Brooks. I didn't speak to Mr. Hewitt at all. Soon as we landed in the depot, he was surrounded by reporters. Well, he's a power in educational circles in this state. It was all I could do to get a glimpse of him.
What does he look like?
Oh, he's quite short, almost completely bald, with a little wispy mustache and small beady eyes behind thick glasses.
Good-looking boy.
And although he's very stout, he moves along rather briskly, like a penguin. I wonder what he's doing in town?
Maybe shopping around for a new tuxedo. But let's not talk about the Board of Education, Mr. Boynton. Time enough for that when school opens next Monday.
You're right, Miss Brooks. You haven't had a real vacation this summer. This picnic tomorrow ought to be...
Oh, it's the phone. Excuse me, Mr. Boynton. Hello?
Hello, Miss Brooks. This is Mr. Conklin.
Oh, how are you, Mr. Conklin?
We'll have to dispense with the amenities, Miss Brooks. I'm calling to inform you that Madison High School will open tomorrow morning at the usual time.
Tomorrow? But school doesn't start till Monday.
I said, Miss Brooks, that our school opens tomorrow.
But, Mr. Conklin, Monday is September 12th. All schools open on the 12th.
I'm beginning to feel as if I were talking into a thermos bottle. Miss Brooks, just a short time ago, I received a telephone call from Mr. Wallace T. Hewitt, chairman of the State Board of Education. Although I've never met Mr. Hewitt, he notified me of his intention to visit my office in the morning. Naturally, I expect a 100% turnout from faculty and student body alike to help me welcome this most distinguished visitor.
But, Mr. Conklin, we've got a picnic planned for tomorrow. In a few minutes, Walter Denton's going to take me shopping.
Walter Denton? Please, Miss Brooks, I've asked you before and I beseech you again, don't mention that name so soon after breakfast. What my daughter sees in that lame-brained dunce is more than I can... No, but there's no time for that now. Until tomorrow morning, Miss Brooks, it's au revoir.
Au revoir to you, Mr. Conklin. Well, there goes our picnic, Mr. Boynton.
Where?
Down the drain, I'm afraid. Your precious Mr. Hewitt has decided to honor our fair school with a visit tomorrow morning. So Mr. Conklin's ordered us all back to greet him.
Tomorrow? But school doesn't open officially until Monday.
Believe me, Mr. Boynton, I delivered that message with all the feeling my parched little throat could muster. But the answer's the same. It's the Bastille at Dawn. Coming! Well, it can't be Walter Denton.
Why not? Hiya, Miss Brooks. I just saw Mr. Boynton on the corner.
I know. He just left. Walter, I've got some sterling news for you.
Your news'll have to wait, Miss Brooks. I've got the bulletin of all time.
Oh, you have?
Sure. Listen to this. You know how Mr. Conklin hates me.
Well, I wouldn't call him a fan, Walter.
Yeah, I know. But even so, when he hears about anybody having a good time, even me, who sometimes tries to muscle in, so I thought up a way to keep him from ruining our picnic tomorrow if he decides to horn in at the last minute.
Uh, but Walter, about tomorrow...
Yeah, please, Miss Brooks, let me finish. About an hour ago, I called old Marblehead on the phone, I mean, Mr. Conklin, and I put a handkerchief over the mouthpiece and disguised my voice. Oh, you should've been there, Miss Brooks. It was a riot!
Oh, what did you say, Walter?
I said, "Get a load of this, Miss Brooks." I said...
Hello, Conklin?
And he said, "Yes, this is our good Conklin. Who is this?" And then I said, "Ooh, this'll kill ya, Miss Brooks."
Well, let's not make it such a slow death. Who did you say it was?
I said...
Conklin, this is Wallace T. Hewitt.
Wallace T... Oh, no!
Yeah, and then I said, "I'm inspecting some of the schools in this area, and I'll expect to see you in your office at nine o'clock tomorrow morning." And then while he was falling all over himself to be nice to me, I hung up. Is that a rib or is that a rib?
That, Walter, is the greatest rib that's been pulled since Adam was a bachelor.
Our Miss Brooks, starring Eve Arden, will continue in just a moment, but first here is Vern Smith. Now, dental science reveals a startling discovery in the fight against tooth decay. Proof that always using Colgate Dental Cream right after eating helps stop tooth decay before it starts. Continuous research, hundreds of case histories, makes this the most important news in dental history. Eminent dental authorities supervised hundreds of college men and women for over a year. One group always brushed their teeth with Colgate's right after eating. The other followed their usual dental care. And here are the amazing results. The group using Colgate Dental Cream as directed showed a startling reduction in average number of cavities, far less tooth decay. The other group developed new cavities at a much higher rate. No other dentist offers proof of these results. And Colgate's contains all the necessary ingredients, including an exclusive patented ingredient for effective daily dental care. No risk of irritation to tissues and gums. And no change in flavor, foam, or cleansing action. As always, Colgate cleans your breath while it cleans your teeth. The Colgate's, now at your dealers, is the same formula used in the tests. Always use Colgate Dental Cream right after eating to help prevent new cavities, help stop tooth decay before it starts.
Well, I spent most of Thursday night trying to figure out how to keep Walter Denton from being expelled and still go on our picnic Friday, instead of waiting around school for a Mr. Hewitt who would never arrive. About four in the morning, an idea was born, and a thoroughbred infant it was, out of desperation by panic. A half hour before school was due to convene, found me heading for Marty's Malt Shop, a student hangout across the street from Madison. As I entered, I noticed Stretch Snodgrass, known to his chums as "Athlete's Foot of the Brain," seated at a table by himself. Good morning, Stretch. Am I intruding?
No, Miss Brooks. You don't look no different to me than you always do.
Thank you, I think. Mind if I sit down and have a cup of coffee?
Not at all. Here, I'll take this off the seat for you. It's my football.
Yes, I know. That's the only thing you've passed all year. But Stretch, there's something you've just got to understand.
Yeah, there must be something.
Now, I'm not so sure. But it seems that a very dear mutual friend of ours engineered a rather foolish prank yesterday, and if the facts ever leak out, he'll be expelled from Madison. You and I, Stretch, hold his scholastic future in our hands. Now, how good are you at keeping a secret?
Oh, I'm very good, Miss Brooks. Like yesterday when my pal Walter Denton imitated Mr. Hewitt's voice on the phone and told old Marblehead, "Oh, Mr. Conklin, he better high-tail it over to school today." After Walter done it, he made me promise to keep it a secret, so that's why I won't tell nobody, not a word of it.
Not a word of what, Stretch?
Well, pal Walter told... Oh, no, you don't. You can't trick me into spilling anything. You couldn't beat it out of me with a rubber hose.
Stout fellow. But Stretch, the entire faculty and student body have to be in school this morning only because Walter imitated Mr. Hewitt's voice on the phone and told old Marblehead, uh, Mr. Conklin, to high-tail it over to school today.
Gosh, how did you know that, Miss Brooks?
There must've been a leak. But I've got an idea that can get us all out of here. Now, will you help me, Stretch?
Sure, Miss Brooks. What can I do?
Well, you can see to it that Mr. Hewitt arrives nice and early so we can all leave the same way.
But I don't know Mr. Hewitt.
And Mr. Conklin doesn't either. Now, listen closely, Stretch. You know the little park right across from the school library?
Library?
Where all the books are kept.
Books?
It's on the way to the football field.
Oh, that little park. Sure, I know where that is. There's always a bunch of old Dellericks sitting around there.
Old what?
Dellericks, you know, bums sorta.
Oh, now we're getting somewhere. Stretch, I want you to get one of those men and bring him to me. But be sure you get a fat one with glasses who has a little mustache. Mr. Conklin might've seen a picture of Mr. Hewitt somewhere.
Well, that shouldn't be too tough. A lot of them look like that. But, Miss Brooks, supposedly he don't want to come.
He's got to come. Tell him he'll be helping a human being in distress. Tell him anything, but bring him directly to me.
Well, I don't get him, Miss Brooks. Why should he...
A quiet stretch, Harriet Conklin's coming over. Now, whatever you do, don't mention a word of this.
Good morning, Miss Brooks.
Well, shut Stretch's mouth if it isn't Harriet Conklin. How are you, Harriet?
Oh, I feel wonderful, Miss Brooks. Hiya, Stretch. What do you know?
You couldn't beat it out of me with a rubber hose.
What's wrong with Stretch, Miss Brooks?
He ain't talking. Now, Stretch, you'd better go over to the park and do what I told you. I'll explain to Harriet and get her oath of allegiance on our way over to school.
All right, Miss Brooks.
Remember now, get a small chubby one with glasses.
I'll remember. See you later, Harriet.
What's this all about, Miss Brooks? What did you send Stretch after?
A penguin, Harriet.
With glasses?
Why not? A penguin's entitled to see where he's going, isn't he?
I don't understand this. Boy, of all the people in the park, why did you have to pick on me?
Because you were so nice and round. I mean, like I told you, mister, it's a matter of helping out a human being. Besides, you wasn't doing nothing in the park.
I wasn't doing nothing? Who teaches you English, boy?
Miss Brooks! Well, there she is, waiting in the steps. I'll introduce her to you in a minute. What's your name?
My name is Hewitt. Wallace T. Hewitt, chairman of the State Board of Education.
Excuse me a minute.
Where are you going?
I better go back to the park and get another one.
Now, I'm saying humor allows my curiosity now, and I'm going to see this thing through.
Hello, Stretch.
Miss Brooks, this is Mr. Hewitt.
Oh, it certainly is. Oh, he's perfect, Stretch.
Perfect?
But, Miss Brooks, this really is Mr. Hewitt.
I'll say, from the top of his shiny skull to the tips of his waddly little toes.
Now, see here, young woman, I demand to know what this is all about. First, I'm sitting in the park reading and...
The want ads can wait, chubby. I've got a job for you.
A job? For me?
It'll only take a few minutes, and I'll see that you get a dollar for your trouble.
A dollar?
This kid is really anxious. We could probably have swung it for a quarter. Now, listen carefully, Hewitt. I'll be calling you by that name from here in, so we might as well get used to it. All you've got to do is convince Mr. Conklin, our principal, that you're Mr. Hewitt, chairman of the State Board of Education.
I see. Do you think my card might help to convince him? I've got some in my wallet here. There we are. The cards are right in this little compartment. See where my name is printed in gold letters?
Wallace T. Hewitt. Quick, Stretch, call a cop. This bum has just murdered Mr. Hewitt.
Murdered? Now, look here, young woman, this has gone far enough. Fortunately, I'm just proud enough of my position to carry with me a newspaper photo which appeared last month. Here, look at it.
Wallace T. Hewitt, chairman of the State Board of Education. Stretch, it's him!
Sure it is.
Of course it's him. It means...
Why, Mr. Hewitt, we knew it was you all the time.
You did, huh? But you said I waddled and that I murdered myself.
Well, that was all part of the joke, Mr. Hewitt. You see, one of our teachers came back on the same train with you from Eagle Springs. You didn't see him, of course, but he couldn't help observing what a jovial, good-natured, jolly sort of person you are.
Well, I do have quite a good sense of humor about some things. But another explanation seems in order, Miss Brooks. Why are so many students roaming about the campus? School doesn't start until next Monday.
Well, that's because our principal, Mr. Conklin, wanted us to get a head start.
Really? Well, that is unusual. I'd like to meet Mr. Conklin while I'm here.
Oh, no, you wouldn't. He's not in on the rib. I mean, that is, with such a distinguished visitor, I'd like to tell him you're here first. You know, give him a chance to run a comb through his tie and fix the knot in his hair.
But, my dear Miss Brooks...
Oh, please, Mr. Hewitt, take a little stroll around the grounds, and I'll meet you at Mr. Conklin's office in a few minutes.
Well, if it'll make you feel more comfortable to announce me. But how will I find Mr. Conklin's office?
You can't miss it. When you come back to the main building, you'll see a door with a gray-haired English teacher in a straitjacket in front of it. Just push me aside and walk right in.
Daddy told me he'd be right over here giving the athletic field a last-minute check. Have you seen him, Walter?
No, Harriet, but he might be in the gym. Gosh, I'm nervous as a kitten. If your dad finds out we're hiring a hobo to impersonate Mr. Hewitt, we'll be boiling oil.
Oh, he won't find out. We'll just have to be real cagey about it. I wonder where daddy could be?
I'm right here behind the handball court, my dear.
Mr. Conklin!
Though I'm to be duped, am I? By an impersonator, eh? A hobo, eh?
But, Miss Brooks, I don't understand. Why am I sitting behind Mr. Conklin's desk?
Because, Mr. Boynton, with the real Mr. Hewitt on our hands, we've got to have a fake Mr. Conklin. And outside of Mr. Conklin, you're the best fake I could find.
But he might come back to his office and...
Well, we've just got to take that chance. If Mr. Hewitt talks to Mr. Conklin and the truth about that phone call comes out, Walter Denton will be expelled.
Gee, I wouldn't want that to happen.
Well, then, we've got to see this thing through. Mr. Hewitt should be finishing his tour of the school. Come in!
Well, Miss Brooks, I'm back.
Good. Mr. Conklin here has just been perishing to meet you. Mr. Conklin, may I present Mr. Hewitt?
How do you do, sir?
So you're Mr. Conklin? Tell me, how long have you been the principal of Madison High School?
Not long at all.
I imagined as much. You're a very young man to be holding this high office, Mr. Conklin, and I might add, a very handsome young man.
Isn't he a doll? And then he's so industrious, Mr. Hewitt. You won't catch many principals jumping the gun like this, uh, coming to school ahead of time.
That's very true, Miss Brooks. I'll certainly mention this in my report to the board. I am returning to the state capital in a couple of hours, you know.
Oh, really? Then we wouldn't want you to miss your train, sir. Now that we've met you, maybe we ought to let you get out.
But fast. I'll show you the shortcut to the bus line if you'll just follow me out this door.
Going somewhere, Miss Brooks?
Not me. I'm rooted to the spot.
Good. And this, I presume, is Mr. Hewitt?
That's right.
Mr. Wallace T. Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman of the State Board of Education?
That is correct. Get out of this office, you hobo! Hobo! Pack up your bindle and hit the road! This has gone far enough. Mr. Conklin, did you hear what I just heard?
Of course I did!
Miss Brooks, what's the meaning of this?
Something wrong, Mr. Hewitt?
Wrong? This hobo just called me a hobo! Do I have to show everyone in town my picture in the paper to prove I'm not a vagrant? Here, take a look at this, you oaf!
Wallace T. Hewitt, chairman of the State...
God! It's you! Yes, it's me! And I'm going to see that the board hears of this outrageous affair. Now, what's your name?
My name?
Yes, your name!
My name is Denton. Walter Denton.
I presume you're a member of the Madison High faculty?
Faculty?
No, 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 I'm a student here. A student? You?
G.I. Bill of Rights. He's making up some credit so he can get into grade school.
Hi, Miss Brooks. The door was open, so I just... Oh, Mr. Conklin!
Yes?
This is Mr. Hewitt. Mr. Wallace T. Hewitt.
It's no use. The jig's up, Miss Brooks. Mr. Conklin knows he's just a hobo.
Again, hobo! What is your name, young man?
Me?
That's my pal, Mr. Hewitt, one of my dearest buddies here at school. Stretch Snodgrass. Take hands with Mr. Hewitt, Stretch.
Stretch!
Somebody mention my name?
Not yet, but we will in a minute. Mr. Hewitt, this is the boy who asked you to join us while you were sitting in the park. Meet Philip Boynton.
Yeah, I don't think I'm quite following the goings-on here today, but I've just got to make that train. Let me tell you one thing, though, Mr. Conklin.
Yes?
Will you please stop putting in Denton?
Sorry, Mr. Hewitt.
They've been with the Glee Club too long.
I just want you to know that in spite of my sense of humor, I consider this incident a grievous insult to a man in my position, and I'm going to take action immediately.
But, Mr. Hewitt, what action are you going to take?
I'm going to see to it that a certain Walter Denton is expelled from this school.
Expelled?
Expelled?
Expelled.
Boy, I'm glad I'm not in their shoes.
Young woman, as the instigator of this degrading, practical joke, you shall be as severely penalized as the State Board permits, and I shall take great pleasure in recommending your immediate suspension without pay. Now, Miss Brooks, what do you say to that? Well, Miss Brooks?
Miss Brooks? Who's Miss Brooks? What?
Well, if you're not Miss Brooks, then who are you?
Mr. Hewitt, shake hands with Sam, the janitor.
Eve Arden, as Our Miss Brooks, returns in just a moment, but first... Tonight, yes, tonight, show him how much lovelier your hair can look after a Luster Cream shampoo. Luster Cream, world's finest shampoo. No other shampoo in the world gives K-Doomit's magic blend of secret ingredients plus gentle lanolin. Not a soap, not a liquid, Luster Cream Shampoo leaves hair three ways lovelier. Fragrantly clean, free of loose dandruff, glistening with sheen, soft, manageable, even in hardest water, Luster Cream lathers instantly. No special rinse needed after a Luster Cream Shampoo. So gentle, Luster Cream is wonderful even for children's hair. Tonight, yes, tonight, try Luster Cream Shampoo. Tonight, yes, tonight, try Luster Cream shampoo.
Dream girl, dream girl, beautiful Luster Cream girl. You owe your crowning glory to... a Luster Cream shampoo.
And now, once again, here is our Miss Brooks.
Well, what started out as a pretty dangerous, practical joke soon proved to be nothing more than a clean-cut, wholesome shambles. But by mass pleading and a pint of quickly-generated tears, we finally prevailed upon Mr. Hewitt to suspend sentence. And at long last, we were off on our picnic. In less than an hour, Mr. Boynton had driven us about thirty miles from town.
Well, it took us a little while, but we can still have some fun.
Sure we can. It's a beautiful day and the rides just swell. Don't you think so, Miss Brooks?
I certainly do, Walter. Your car drives beautifully, Mr. Boynton. So much smoother than mine.
Oh, thanks, Miss Brooks.
But you know something? I can't help wishing we had taken my car instead.
Why, Miss Brooks?
Because that's where I left the picnic basket.
Next week, going into another Our Miss Brooks joke, brought to you by Luster Cream shampoo for soft, glamorous, caressable hair. And Colgate Dental Cream to clean your breath while you clean your teeth and help stop tooth decay. Our Miss Brooks, starring Eve Arden, is produced by Larry Burns, written and directed by Al Lewis, with music by Wilbur Hatch.
Doctors prove you two may have a lovelier complexion in fourteen days. Yes, thirty-six leading skin specialists proved, in tests on twelve-hundred-eighty-five different women, that a new method of cleansing with palm olive soap, using nothing but palm olive, brought new complexion beauty to two women out of three. Just wash your face three times daily with palm olive soap. Each time for sixty seconds, massaging palm olive's beauty lather onto your skin. Then rinse. So start your palm olive facials today. See what palm olive soap can do for your complexion in just fourteen days.
Here is an urgent message from the National Foundation for Infantile Paralysis. March of Dimes funds for the care of polio victims will be used up by September thirtieth, nineteen days from now. It will take over fourteen million dollars to continue this care. So don't abandon America's children. Send your dimes and dollars to Polio Care of your local post office now. For mystery liberally sprinkled with laughs, listen to Mr. and Mrs. North. The exciting, fun-packed adventures of an amateur detective and his beautiful wife. Tune in Tuesday evening over most of these same stations. And be with us again next week at this same time for another comedy episode of Our Miss Brooks. Bob Lamont speaking. This is CBS, the Columbia Broadcasting System.
You're listening to the Old Time Radio Hour, broadcast each week over the World Wide Web, with your host, Justine Ward. Next, we have another authority figure coming to visit Madison High. This is set on a Friday, the thirteenth, with two stray black cats complicating matters. A practical joke by one of the students will keep you laughing at Our Miss Brooks in Cure That Habit, first broadcast January fifteenth, nineteen fifty, on CBS.
Colgate Dental Cream to clean your breath while you clean your teeth and help stop tooth decay. And Luster Cream shampoo for soft, glamorous, caressable hair bring you Our Miss Brooks, starring Eve Arden. It's time once again for another comedy episode of Our Miss Brooks, written by Al Lewis. Well, last Friday fell on the thirteenth of the month, a day of caution for the superstitious. But to Our Miss Brooks, who teaches English at Madison High School, it didn't mean a thing.
No, indeed. Even when my landlady told me at breakfast that our cat Minerva came home with two black kittens, I just laughed and said, "Mrs. Davis, no!"
Oh, yes. They've just had our last drop of milk.
But Minerva and I were always so friendly. She didn't say a word to me about this.
Oh, the kittens aren't Minerva's. I don't know where they belong. All I know is that we can't afford to keep them. It would mean two more mouths to feed.
You're right, Mrs. Davis. We've got enough trouble feeding the mouths we've got.
Say, I've got an idea. We could leave them in the Snodgrass Pet Shop until we located the owners. Spetch his father has all sorts of things in his place.
That's true. He even has Stretch.
Good old Stretch. That boy certainly is a fine athlete.
Yes, he is. Now, if there was only some way we could find to exercise his brain. Don't worry about the kittens, Mrs. Davis. I'll have Walter Denton drop them off at the pet shop on our way to school this morning.
Good. And one more thing, Connie. Would you deliver this jar to Mr. Conklin when you get to school?
Certainly, Mrs. Davis. What have you cooked up for our beloved principal?
It's a secret concoction, Connie. My own recipe. It never fails.
Good. How long does it take to work and will they find out what's in it at the autopsy?
It's just a remedy for hiccups, Connie. It contains nothing but juniper juice, oil of cloves, a dash of vinegar, some vanilla extract, a spoonful of baking soda-
Uh, tell me the rest after breakfast.
Well, that's about all there is to it, but it's very good. Mrs. Conklin says it's just a nervous reaction. She called last night and told me he got the hiccups yesterday, just a few minutes after he found out that the superintendent of schools is visiting him this afternoon.
Mr. Michael? Why should he give Mr. Conklin the hiccups?
Well, there's a new term starting in February, and it seems that Mr. Michaels wants to chat with Osgood about the way he's running Madison.
You mean if Mr. Michaels finds fault with something, there's a chance that Mr. Conklin may not be... Oh, now, cut it out, Connie. You're too old to live in a dream world. Oh, that's Walter Denton. Come in, Walter!
I'd better go into the kitchen. I've got to clean those dishes I used for the kittens' meal.
Why don't you let Minerva do the dishes? They're her friends.
Hi, Miss Brooks. Did I hear Mrs. Davis mention kittens?
Just some trenchant acquaintances, Walter. We're gonna drop them off at Stretch's pet shop on the way to school.
Oh, swell. Stretch will get a big kick out of them. He loves animals. All kinds of animals.
I know. You've been friends for years, haven't you? I hope you're not superstitious, Walter, but these are both black cats, and today is Friday, the thirteenth.
Oh, that doesn't bother me, Miss Brooks. This is gonna be a red-letter day in my memory. The day when the results of careful planning should be brought to fruition.
Translation?
Well, you've heard of Cure That Habit Incorporated, haven't you?
You mean the outfit that helps people overcome alcoholism?
Yes, ma'am. They got a big ad in the papers. You know, perhaps you or someone near and dear to you is a victim of this dread disease. Send for our instructive literature telling how you two can be cured. Well, the day before yesterday, I sent for it.
You, Walter? I always thought you were strictly a two-coke-a-day man.
Oh, I didn't sign my name and address to the request. I printed the name of someone very near and dear to me.
Who?
Osgood Conklin.
Walter, Mr. Conklin doesn't drink. Why, even on New Year's Eve, he just had fruit punch. His proudest boast is that he's a teetotaler.
Well, that's the humor of it. When he gets all this stuff in the mail, he'll think that somebody, somewhere, doesn't believe that he doesn't drink. That thought alone should turn him purple.
It'll probably be quite a picturesque spectacle, but I still don't think it's right, Walter. Does Harriet know about this rib?
Of course not. She's his daughter. She likes Mr. Conklin.
Well, she's bright in other ways. Now, come on, Walter. We've got to get started for school if we're gonna drop those kittens off.
Okay, Miss Brooks. Oh, uh, one thing before we go. Everything I've told you today is strictly confidential. But not that I'm asking for an oath of secrecy or anything. I know that I couldn't possibly feel the admiration and respect for you that I do feel if I thought you'd rat on me. I mean, betraying my confidence about this joke that I'm pulling.
Well, don't worry, Walter. Your secret is safe with me.
Miss Brooks, that statement makes me feel warm all over.
Really?
Sure. In a dangerous, practical joke like this, it's great to know that somebody else is in it with yuck to her ears.
I'd have kept you waiting, Mr. Chalmers. What can I do for you?
Well, Mr. Michaels, as superintendent of schools, you're acquainted, no doubt, with the principal of Madison High School.
Oh, yes, that's Osgood Conklin. Matter of fact, I'm going to see him this afternoon.
Then I'd very much like to go with you. You see, Mr. Michaels, my son attends Madison High, and I'm very anxious to find out the meaning of this postcard which arrived at my office this morning.
Postcard?
Yes, sir. I'll read it to you. It's addressed to Cure That Habit Incorporated. That's my firm, Mr. Michaels. And it says, uh, "Kindly send me all your literature. I am determined, once and for all, to rid myself of the curse of alcoholism." It's signed, "Osgood Conklin."
Here we are, Miss Brooks. Dear old Madison High.
I should have known that the Snodgrass Pet Shop doesn't open until nine. What in the world are we gonna do with these kittens, Walter?
Gosh, I don't know, Miss Brooks. Mr. Conklin's awfully strict about pets in the building. The only animals allowed are in Mr. Boynton's lab. Oh, say, we could keep them in there until lunch period.
That's right. Then Stretch could take them over to his dad's shop. Come on, Walter, let's take them in. Wait a minute, where are the kittens?
I've got them in my sweater pocket. See, uh, here's one. And, uh, here's the other one.
So much for Maxine and Laverne.
Hello, Miss Brooke.
Hello, Patty. I mean, Harriet.
Hey, Harriet. Well, I gotta run now. I'll talk to you later.
Okay, Walter.
How does your dad feel, Harriet? Are the hiccups gone?
Yes, Miss Brooks. They disappeared about an hour ago, but I'm afraid it isn't permanent. Every time something unpleasant happens, it brings them on again.
Well, maybe this remedy that Mrs. Davis sent down will be of some help. I'd better take it into him right now.
All right, Miss Brooks. See you in class.
Come in.
It's me, Mr. Conklin.
Oh, Miss Brooks. Hiccup! Well, they're back.
Who's back?
Hiccup! Does that answer your question?
Maybe you should see a doctor, Mr. Conklin.
Saw a doctor yesterday. Hiccup! Told me to relax, and they go away. Relax. Hiccup! What's in that jar you've got there?
It's a hiccup cure that Mrs. Davis asked me to give you. She made it herself.
What's in it?
Nothing but juniper juice, oil of cloves, a dash of vinegar, some vanilla extract, and baking soda.
I'd rather have the hiccup.
Mr. Conklin, if you haven't got anything else handy, maybe you ought to try some of Mrs. Davis's remedy.
Well, I might take just one swallow of the stuff. Give it here.
Well, Mr. Conklin, what does it taste like?
Well, it tastes like hiccup! Like hiccup! Like hiccup! Like-
What's the difference, as long as it does the job?
Our Miss Brooks, starring Eve Arden, will continue in just a moment, but first, here is Vern Smith. No other dentiferous offers proof of such results. Proof that Colgate Dental Cream helps stop tooth decay before it starts. Two years' research at leading universities using Colgate Dental Cream, hundreds of case histories, makes this the most conclusive proof in all dentiferous history on tooth decay. Conclusive proof that when teeth are brushed with Colgate right after eating, Colgate Dental Cream helps stop tooth decay before it starts. Yes, the toothpaste you use to clean your breath while you clean your teeth now offers a safe, proved way to reduce tooth decay. Modern science shows decay is caused by mouth acids, which are at their worst right after eating. Brushing teeth with Colgate as directed helps remove acids before they harm enamel. Colgate Dental Cream has been proved to contain all the necessary ingredients, including an exclusive patented ingredient for effective daily dental care. Get Colgate Dental Cream today. Big economy size, only fifty-nine cents. Remember, no other dentiferous offers proof of such results. So always use Colgate Dental Cream to clean your breath while you clean your teeth and help stop tooth decay before it starts.
Well, after giving Mr. Conklin an antidote for Mrs. Davis's hiccup remedy, I returned to my classroom and wiled away the hours before lunch by teaching a bit of English. Promptly at noon, I found myself, by the amazing coincidence which occurs daily, at Mr. Boynton's biology lab.
Come in.
Oh, it's you, Miss Brooks. I'm glad you dropped in. Very glad, indeed.
Honestly, Mr. Boynton?
I should say so. You gotta get these cats out of here.
Now, don't worry about that. Walter Denton has asked Stretch to pick them up and take them to the Snodgrass Pet Shop.
Oh, good.
Where are they, Mr. Boynton?
Well, I had to keep them over here in a separate cage, away from the white mice. They, uh, they were pretty upset.
Cats do that to mice, is the rule.
Well, here they are. This one loves to be petted. So does this one, for that matter.
Hello, Mr. Boynton. I- Oh, excuse me, Miss Brooks. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, that's all right, Stretch.
Well, I don't mind waiting if you wanna finish your song.
No, thanks. I don't know the rest of the words, anyway.
Are these the cats Walter wants me to take down to the shop?
Oh, that's right, Stretch. You think you can handle them all right?
Oh, sure. I love animals. Gosh, I think animals are smarter than a lot of people of whom I'm acquainted with.
I know they're smarter than some people of whom I'm acquainted with.
Before I take the cats, Mr. Boynton, I'd like to talk to you about a swap. You got a bullfrog in here I'd like to show my dad.
You don't mean my pet McDougall?
Oh, no, sir. I know you wouldn't let Mac out of your sight. I mean, this big fella over here. Hi, oh, boy. Hi, oh, big fella. See? He knows me. Say more, fella.
He certainly talks your language.
If you'll let me have him, Mr. Boynton, I'll give you Clarence.
Clarence?
I got him right here in my pocket. There he is. Well, don't be scared. He's perfectly harmless, isn't he, Mr. Boynton?
Oh, yes, of course. It's completely non-poisonous, Miss Brooks. This little creature's a milk snake.
That's right, Miss Brooks. Just a little old milk snake.
Must take a pretty shallow bucket.
Well, he couldn't possibly hurt anyone, Miss Brooks. He's just a baby.
That doesn't prove anything. When I was a baby, I bit people all the time. Take him away, Stretch, please.
Well, yes, Stretch. You keep the snake and, uh, take the frog along, too.
Gee, thanks, Mr. Boynton. I'll take awful good care of him.
Don't forget the kittens, Stretch.
Well, I won't. Let's see now. It's a good thing I wore my sport jacket today. I can put the kittens in the side pockets, the frog in an inside pocket, and Clarence in my breast pocket.
Too bad you're not a kangaroo. You could give me a lift to the cafeteria.
Oh, I'm not going to the cafeteria. I gotta go to the principal's office and clean it up. Mr. Conklin's expecting some high brass down.
You mean the chandeliers loose?
No, ma'am. The superintendent of schools is coming here. And that reminds me, Mr. Conklin says that you should inspect his office as soon as I get through and see that everything spick and span.
Me?
That's right, Miss Brooks. Well, I better get going. Thanks for the keen frog, Mr. Boynton.
Oh, you're welcome, Stretch.
See you in a little while, Miss Brooks.
Oh, that's just dandy. Now I won't be able to accept your charming invitation to lunch, Mr. Boynton.
What invitation? Oh, oh, you mean to lunch. Gee, Miss Brooks, maybe you could have a quick lunch with me and then inspect Mr. Conklin's office.
I hate to disappoint you, Mr. Boynton, but that's just what I'm going to do.
Sir, the last window's clean. Mr. Conklin's office looks neat as a pin. Don't you think so, Miss Brooks?
Let's see. Yes, it looks very nice, Stretch. Mr. Conklin should be very pleased when he gets back from lunch.
Well, I hope so. Now, I'll put my jacket back on and get these animals back to the... Hey, wait a minute. They're gone.
Who's gone?
Everybody. The kid, the frog, and the snake. They must have crawled out of my pockets when I put my jacket down.
Oh, no. Well, they must be in the office somewhere. We've got to find them before-
Well, let's see how the place looks.
Mr. Conklin.
Ah, you've done a very nice job, Stretch.
Well, thanks, Mr. Conklin, but-
You can run along now. Miss Brooks, you will stay here and help me find some papers.
Yes, sir.
But, Mr. Conklin-
I've already thanked you, Snodgrass. Now go! Now then, Miss Brooks, I've been trying to locate the semi-annual report I made to the Board of Education six months ago. Will you kindly look in the top drawer of my desk while I try the closet here?
Very well, Mr. Conklin. Uh, it's not in there.
You hardly looked, Miss Brooks.
I saw enough.
Not in here either. Oh, it must be in this drawer. Let me look for myself. You were right, Miss Brooks. Nothing in there but a cat. Well, maybe it's in this other drawer. No, just another cat. Well, in that case, I simply have... JUST ANOTHER CAT! Miss Brooks, what are those two cats doing in my desk?
Maybe they're looking for the report, too. They, they might have strayed in through an open window, Mr. Conklin. I'll have them removed at once.
Well, see that you do, but first go look in my filing cabinet.
Yes, sir.
Uh, look under letter B.
Yes, sir. What are you doing in here? You should be filed under F. It's not in here, Mr. Conklin.
Well, it must be somewhere. Let me look. Uh, what's in this batch? Uh, let's see. One letter from Boys Town, my Beaver Patrol badge. One communication from the board. One frog. An invitation to the Elks BBQ, another notice of a board meeting, a letter from- ONE FROG! Miss Brooks, there's a frog hopping around my filing cabinet! Yes, he's jumping all over the place. What will I do, Miss Brooks?
Why don't you hit him with the snake that's crawling on your coat lapel?
That's a good idea. I'll just take this snake and then I'll- TAKE THIS SNAKE!
Here, Mr. Conklin, just file him under S.
What's going on here? Miss Brooks, look! Look, there's mark on my hand. That snake bit me. I'm poisoned.
Over, Mr. Conklin. He couldn't-
I've got to be inoculated. Quick, take me to the first aid room.
Now, just sit in that chair and relax for a minute, Mr. Conklin. I'll be right back.
As you say, Miss Brooks.
Hi, Miss Brooks. I got all the animals out of Mr. Conklin's office.
Good. For a while there, he thought the snake bit him, but I've convinced Mr. Conklin that the mark on his hand is just a bruise. In fact, I was looking for some rubbing alcohol, but they seem to be out of it in first aid.
Well, I'll get you some over at the gym, but first I'd like to cheer Mr. Conklin up a bit. Hi, Mr. Conklin. Let's see your hand.
There. All black and blue.
That ain't nothing at all, Mr. Conklin. The skin ain't even broke. You got nothing to worry about.
Thank you, doctor. Now that- Hiccup! Now that hiccup! There they are again.
Oh, don't worry about them, Mr. Conklin.
I didn't expect you'd be concerned, Miss Brooks.
Well, frankly, after hearing nothing but meows and hoo all day, it's a relief to hear a hoo.
Well, I know a sure cure for hiccups, Mr. Conklin. Now, just sit back in that swivel chair for a minute.
I am sitting back.
Swell. Now, the idea is to start spinning you around slowly.
Yeah, uh, Stretch, stop that.
It never fails.
Stretch, you mustn't spin, Mr. Conklin, like that.
I know. We gotta spin 'em- We gotta spin him faster.
Oh, no, Stretch.
Let go of me! Stop! This is one. Do you hear me? You can't do this. Stop it, I said!
Stretch, stop!
There.
Daddy, I've been looking all over for you.
Who are these girls who just came in?
It's me, Daddy. Harriet. Oh, Mr. Michaels was waiting for you in your office.
Oh, oh, thank you, Harriet. I just got up. Whoa, whoa, I can hardly stand. I'm so dizzy.
Maybe you ought to spin around the other way for a while.
Well, let me help you, Mr. Conklin.
I'll deal with you later, boy. Meanwhile, Miss Brooks, you go ahead and tell Mr. Michaels. I'll be right there. I'll lean on Harriet and Stretch until I feel a little stronger.
So you see, Mr. Michaels, I certainly wouldn't want my boy in a school run by someone who had to come to my firm for assistance.
I'm sure there must be some mistake, Mr. Chalmers. I've known Osgood Conklin for a good many years, and whatever else he may be, he's not a drinking man.
Good day, gentlemen. I'm Miss Brooks. Mr. Conklin will be here in a minute.
I'm Mr. Michaels, Miss Brooks, and this is Mr. Chalmers.
How do you do?
How do you do?
Uh, tell me, Miss Brooks, uh, how is Mr. Conklin feeling these days?
Feeling? Oh, just fine. He's never been better.
Good. You see, Mr. Chalmers, I'm sure that one look at Mr. Conklin will convince you that he's not the type of person who sends postcards to Cure That Habit Incorporated.
Hello, Mr. Michaels. Sorry I'm late. Hiccup!
Let me help you up, Mr. Conklin.
I, uh, must have tripped, Mr. Michaels. And who are these gentlemen with you?
These gentlemen are Mr. Chalmers. Shake hands with the one in the middle.
Pleasure to know you, Mr. Chalmers.
Don't look now, but that's Mr. Michaels. Here's Mr. Chalmers.
Oh, of course. Glad to shake your hand, Mr. Chalmers.
You're shaking his umbrella.
What seems to be the matter, Mr. Conklin? Having trouble with your vision?
Uh, yes, yes, that's it. I broke my glasses this morning. Well, I'll get over here. Hiccup! Sit down at my desk.
Michaels, look at him stagger.
Incredible. Miss Brooks, you said Mr. Conklin never felt better?
That's right. You should've seen him an hour ago. Boy, what hiccups.
Hiccups?
Uh, yes, yes. I always get them when I'm startled.
And, uh, what, may I ask, startled you?
He opened his desk drawer this morning and saw a cat in it.
Tell me, Mr. Conklin, in which drawer did you, uh, see the cat?
Well, the first cat I saw was in this drawer.
In this drawer, Mr. Conklin?
No, no, there's another cat in there. It was the one in here that startled me.
Would you mind showing us your cats, Mr. Conklin?
Not at all. They're right here in these drawers. Uh, there's, uh... Why, they're gone.
They, uh, they come and they go, Mr. Conklin?
Miss, Miss Brooks, where are the cats?
They disappeared right after I took you to first aid. But he really did see them, gentlemen.
Indeed. The next thing you'll be trying to tell us is that he found a bullfrog in his filing cabinet.
How did you know?
Bullfrog, too?
There must be some error here.
Yes, he was filed under B instead of F.
Well, Mr. Michaels, do you believe me now?
I'm afraid I do, Mr. Chalmers. Conklin, I don't want to seem unnecessarily cruel, but if you want to stay on as principal of this-
Pardon me, folks. Uh, here's your alcohol, Mr. Conklin.
I'll take it, Stretch.
Miss Brooks, that alcohol is for Mr. Conklin?
Yes, it's for where the snake bit him.
Snake?
Yes, of course, it really, it really didn't bite him. He just thought it did.
So... So you saw a snake, too, Mr. Conklin?
Yes, yes, I did, right on my lapel. Although I'm told he's not poisonous, snakes still give me an extremely unpleasant feeling. I assure you that if I ever see him again, I'll... Wait a minute. There he is, under your chair, Mr. Chalmers. Look out! I'll get him, Mr.... I'll get him! There.
Good for you, Mr. Conklin. You have just killed Mr. Chalmers' umbrella.
Getting out of here. This man is dangerous.
I'll go with you, Mr. Chalmers. As for you, Mr. Conklin, I'll talk to you again when you're sober.
Sober?
Mr. Chalmers here is the head of Cure That Habit Incorporated.
Oh, no.
This card he received yesterday will explain why he called on me this morning.
Good day. Cure This Habit Incorporated? What has that got to do with me? Miss Brooks, read this card for me.
It says, "Kindly send me all your literature. I am determined once and for all to rid myself of the curse of alcoholism." And it's signed, "Osgood Conklin."
Poor soul. Any man who has to resort to writing in- OSGOOD CONKLIN!
Look, Mr. Conklin, I know you didn't write this postcard because I know who did,